Good evening, everybody. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Randeburg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent. Councilman Pataglia?
Here.
Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
Meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJHS 810-4-6 at sec. Notice having been published according to law, the copy on file in the Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board.
Okay, would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we turn it over to the City Manager.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Invited guests, this is the Cal meeting for January 29, 2019. First on the agenda is the presentation from the No Suffer Society Animal Rescue. Sir, you can use this microphone right here.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'd like to thank the Mayor and City Council for inviting me here to speak tonight about the No Suffer Society and our vision for 2019 and beyond. The No Suffer Society, or NSS, is a New Jersey 501(c)(3) nonprofit committed to building an international coalition of animal shelters and rescue groups, as well as public, private, academic, and nonprofit partners in order to improve the lives of unadopted animals around the world. I also lead Code for Hackensack, an official member of the Code for America National Brigade Network, and Founders Live, New Jersey, our state's chapter of the global entrepreneurship network, Founders Live. By leveraging the reach and resources of these three organizations, I have succeeded in outlining a cooperative framework for technologists, philanthropists, and business leaders to come together in pursuit of a common purpose. Our shared mission is to modernize animal rescue operations, unite shelter facilities, and improve the lives of unadopted pets in all corners of the world. Every international vision begins with a strong domestic framework, which for us is the World Rescue Embassy, the first not-for-profit innovation center where local, county, state, federal, private sector, and international thought leaders can convene and collaborate on challenges affecting animal rescue. NSS envisions the World Rescue Embassy as an anchor institution, consensus chamber, community space, research and training facility, and our organization's headquarters. Dr. David Baikoff and his wife Pascalina have granted us the courtesy of opening the doors to their 146 Route 17 South property in order to showcase potential sponsors and donors a preliminary vision for the space as we work to raise the funds needed to purchase the property and begin the transformation process. Invite you all to lend your voice to our campaign by signing our petition at nosuffer.org and offering any advice you have on how we can bring our dream closer to reality. Thank you all for your time. I will now open the floor to questions.
All right. Steph?
So is this a... Are you existing already? Or is this the first in the area? Or how is that working?
Yes, so we're the first nonprofit organization to focus on building a coalition at the international level. And so most efforts domestically are focused on the U.S. And so we've been having conversations with shelter groups in Israel and Mexico and really creating the first international coalition where groups are cooperating and working towards a common goal.
Thank you.
And are you looking to establish that in this building on Route 17 in Hackensack?
Yes, I see Hackensack as a great source, both within the region, within the county, within the state, proximity to other areas within the Northeast, transportation hub. I see a lot of areas for alignment with Hackensack's city plan, as well as the state plan for innovation centers, and really using this shared goal to unite philanthropic organizations, for-profit, nonprofit, academic institutions, Fairleigh Dickinson, Bergen Community, getting them all in the center and driving the mission, which would create secondary opportunities for economic development, driving awareness of the city's initiatives and really fostering other opportunities as well.
Are you looking to use the entire building? Or do you tell us what percentage or what amount of square footage of that building you're planning to occupy?
Yes, so it would be the entire building, and we'd have each floor sectioned off into space depending on what the needs be. So, for example, one month we may have school students come touring, and we'd have visualizations where they could maybe, you know, have touchscreens and see local shelters in their area, see local initiatives they could get involved in. Once we host a certain number of schools, the next week we might be hosting rescue leaders. So we, you know, having the flexibility to move that space around would be ideal. And so we did a preliminary showcase on September 29, 2018, where we used three floors of the building and showcased a variety of programming that we could host in the space.
Just refresh my memory. What's currently... What businesses are currently in that? And that... Or is it empty? I mean, are they looking to vacate?
Three of the floors are empty. The top floor is currently housing Dr. Baikoff's medical practice. And so that's...
And he's going to be leaving? Or he's going to stay?
Yes, he'll be leaving. The property is currently on the market, which is how I found it. And after having conversations with them, I found out that they're both very involved in animal rescue, have been for a long time. And so they allowed us, you know, this open-door policy, which we hadn't expected when we first toured the property.
Hey, Leo?
Okay, so that building is related to the city of Hackensack?
Yes, because I see Hackensack going through a revitalization, and I think that this would be a great opportunity to get Hackensack on the international grid, ensuring that we get injection of funds from a variety of sponsors, sources. I'll be flying out to Seattle tomorrow to meet with Rover, who just raised $150 million seed round for their dog-walking app. They're a young team. They understand collaborative initiatives, and they seem to be... Have preliminary interest in this type of initiative. So making sure the foundation is set for securing funding like that. I'll also be speaking with John O'Hurley, who's helped us in past events, the former Seinfeld actor, and making sure that we have these influential voices convening here in Hackensack so that we can pursue our goal, which affects and benefits communities both locally, throughout the county, nationally, and internationally.
Do you have planning to build with the shelter that we have in Teterboro?
Yes, and so we see them as being a key partner in proving the validity of our local collaboration efforts.
The price of that building is about how much?
About $4 million.
About a billion?
Right, and so we see that...
$162,000.
It's our pants.
What about the taxes?
$162,000 is the current taxes.
And so as a nonprofit, I'm not entirely sure how that would factor in. If there is no taxes paid, we had a plan for reimbursing the town through other packages, so making sure that our commitment doesn't detract...
So you're planning to be tax-exempt?
We are a tax-exempt organization. However, there are opportunities for us to ensure that that does not cause any problems for the town. For example, one of our programings, through conferences, we can allocate a certain amount of our budget for a back-to-the-city fund. And so making sure that every year we meet that minimum of what the footprint... Or rather, what the absence of tax caused by our entry into that building causes.
All right, my turn. I'm a big advocate for rescues.
Great to hear.
Last two dogs were rescues. And a big advocate for that because it's a shame that people go out and get these... All these different dogs, and they're entitled to do that. But there's plenty of dogs waiting and cats waiting to be adopted, so...
Tommy's a rescue.
Yeah, rescues are great. They're thankful, you can tell. What I like to do, though, is set up another meeting with your principals and two people from the council so we can just go over some details. There's all... You know, it's going to be a lot of questions that we're going to need answered. I think it's a good location, being on the highway. And I think it would bring some well-deserved attention to Hackensack if it was hosted here. But still some questions to be answered. So if we could set up a meeting, get the City Manager's information, he'll give you his card, and we'll sit down and have a, you know... Set up a time for a meeting with your people, the two of us, and move forward from there. But it's... Looks like a good proposition. Just have some details to work out.
Wonderful. And if you have any ideas in terms of how we could get local schools, partnerships, any other benefits that we may not be seeing, we'd love to have that, you know. You could think...
Well, I like the idea that you're going to involve the public and, you know, it's good PR for the city. It's good PR for you guys. It's good for the kids. It's good for seniors. You know, I mean, pets are good for everybody.
Right.
And, you know, I like that part of it, so...
Sounds great.
Let's move forward and have a meeting and see where we get, all right?
Wonderful. All right, thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Number two.
Okay, number two is a discussion to the amendment to the ordinance for the Anderson Street parking meters. This is basically an update of the Anderson Street 90-minute or 50 cents an hour from Lindenapp to Bangborn Place from 9:00 in the morning till 6:00 p.m. The time is permitted from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This would still be timed parking because we have three blocks away for Bangborn, Anderson, and Conklin. If the Mayor and Council want to keep 15 minutes of free parking for six spaces, we're just looking for some guidance.
We kind of talked a bit about this at a meeting that we had, this development meeting. And, you know, we kind of feel, you know, those six spaces were always there for the convenience of those businesses, and there is a 15-minute time limit. So it shouldn't be that folks that, you know, are looking to park there park longer than that would be avoiding a... Would be avoiding a meter and putting their cars there as long as we enforce that 15-minute. Then again, you know, Bill Daley brought up the fact that he wanted it to be consistent, and if there's meters, he feels there should be meters everywhere. So, I mean, I think you're kind of playing back and forth with both of those things. The real questions we had were... And I know Albert tried to look up some of the order... The meter-feeding ordinances. You know, right now it's a two-hour limit. And, you know, just like we had problems on Main Street, once we remove that two-hour limit, even though you can only put 90 minutes into the meter, can they just continue to put more and more 90 minutes?
That's a move. But it's very hard to enforce.
The ordinance says...
Because then you chalk the tires and go through the hole.
Right, you chalk tires.
For the car move. People wipe the chalk off.
I read that ordinance, and I was confused by it. So if you think that's what it says, I'm going to take your word for it because I couldn't figure it out. It wasn't real clear to me.
I will have another conversation with traffic and perhaps our police director who's here now, Bill Daley. But my reading of it was once the meter... Once that time has expired, you have to move. And if that's a concern, then we can tighten up the language in the ordinance with a verbiage that would do that. But I think that it's generally understood that meter-feeding...
He didn't want people sitting there all day. That's why the two... Now we're lifting the two hours, that was the...
Well, it wasn't... We ended up changing... There was a previous ordinance that Al and Bill Daley and I had worked on to update various areas that we thought should be metered. So Anderson Street was not metered. It was just simply time-limited parking. So we actually adopted this ordinance, 44, 2018, to make Anderson Street a parking meter zone. And it makes sense, obviously. The train station's there, and you can certainly understand why you want to have meters there. When they went to put in the meters, they noticed that Anderson Street also had some language regarding time-limit parking. So there was some question whether the meters should be put in until we correct this ordinance and ensure that, you know, there's no conflict between various sections of the city code. Chapter 170 is a massive section, you know, and we always, when we go through it, find things that need to be updated and need to be cleaned up. So they asked me, and I said, "Look, you know, we should certainly, I think, take that out." I think we still could have put the meters in, but just to be safe and to have a city code that reads properly, let's go and make these changes. So right now, you know, we can certainly amend this ordinance to whatever the council wants, but we do need to make changes in order to make sure that the code doesn't read in a conflicting manner in multiple locations.
No, I understand that. My question was, we had put the two-hour limit there for a reason so people couldn't park there all day. And now that the signage is going to have to go too because there's signs as well. So now that we're changing that and really there is no published time limit, the only thing you have is the meter. And the meters are 90 minutes. So the question that came up at our meeting was, you know, again, we want that for people... We don't want people that work in those shops to be parking in front of those shops all day. And it's cheap and easy to just feed that meter all day before. They couldn't do that because there's a two-hour limit. Albert had looked up if we had a meter-feeding ordinance which would say, "Okay, when your 90 minutes are up, you can't go put in another 90 minutes," which would then, in essence, do the same thing as it was before. And that's what we wanted to make sure was happening before we finish this tonight.
It's one sentence, which I just sent you. I can read it. It says, "Parking or standing a vehicle in a parking meter space in the parking meter zone described in Schedule 11, attached to and made part of this chapter, shall be lawful only when not in excess of the maximum parking time indicated during the hours of operation specified on all days except Sundays and holidays, and only upon the deposit of such amount as is indicated for each specified period of time."
So if that means when your 90 minutes are up, you have to move, then I think we've covered ourselves. I'm just not... I wasn't really sure if that's what that meant. That's all from a legal standpoint.
What about the people that live in that particular building in Anderson Street? That they don't have no part to move?
Right, you have to pay the meter.
And that... No, okay, but you pay the meter, but then you have to... So where are they going to park? Because the particular apartment that was built, maybe...
So we're talking about the one that's on the south side?
The top of the restaurant. Like, okay, you got the police station there in that side?
Which one?
The...
The substation was there.
The substation that you got in Anderson Street. And after that, you got like, what? Two, three buildings? They got barber shops?
Well, they shouldn't be parking on the street now anyway because they shouldn't be on the street now anyway because there's a two-hour limit.
It's only a two-hour limit now.
No, but the people that live there...
They don't... They can't park there more than two hours right now, according to the law.
It's a two-hour parking.
They should be parking... I think what they're doing is parking on...
Yeah, but if you have a building that was built 50, 60 years ago, with no parking, and they be using the street for parking, where are they going to put their cars?
We're not arguing with you, Leo. We're just saying that they shouldn't have been allowed to be parking there already because right now...
They're not supposed to allow to build without parking.
No, but there's a two-hour limit now. So if our police were enforcing that...
You can imagine if you got an old lady that live in the apartment, park the car now, she got to go down to the [unintelligible] and look for some places.
Or she's got to park inside.
The deputy mayor has weighed in on the real issue. The issue is enforcement. Meters make it easier because it's cut and dry. Meter expired, didn't put any money in, easy to write a ticket. When the police department is challenged with going to chalk those tires and check on it because now the maximum you can only park is two hours becomes difficult and also contentious because people are going to say, "Oh, it was 15 minutes. I left here at 9:00. You said you checked it at 9:15." And we get through this whole issue of debate. So I personally would recommend that we come up with a solution that's very clear.
Well, if we're going to do a meter, I mean, we have a two-hour limit now. I would do the meters to be two hours. Why? They should match up.
That's where the city has made its own conflicts because we create our own inversion here because...
The meter should match up with the parking.
One ordinance says this, the enforcement says that.
It should be the same.
Our city attorney, they have to mirror. If they don't mirror, we're always going to be contentious.
And going back to those...
Six spaces.
The six spaces. And I agree with Bill on the fact that if, you know, this deli gets free parking for 15 minutes on all those spaces. So going to get a bagel and the bagel shop 100 yards down the street doesn't get them. So if I'm this guy, I got a legitimate right.
Well, you can make 15 minutes... You can make a meter 15 minutes. That's not outside the realm of possibility.
And it does work. Because I did ask Bill that question. In other words, if you're going to just be 15 minutes, you could put... A quarter will get you half an hour, he said. So you can just put 25 cents in and still go in and out. So if... Once he said that, I was saying, "Okay, then maybe we could just meter it all and just make sure the public understands that." I just felt that everybody here, before we vote on this, we should all be in agreement that if we're going to do it all meter, we're going to allow 25 cents for half hour so that only it's going to cost them a quarter. Anywhere, if they're going to run up in and out of a store, it shouldn't be a hardship, I would think, to anyone. But Leo brings up the point of the people that are now using that really illegally. If they're using that to park overnight... Well, no, because it doesn't go into effect after night. This would be a problem.
That's right. You could park...
Overnight, that's okay.
Overnight, that's...
It's at 7:00.
I'm trying to think of what businesses are on Anderson because there's a barber shop, there's a nail place, some of those places. I'm going to be more than... Those places are quicker, but I don't know if you would get a haircut.
Well, two hours should suffice for a barber shop.
Well, no, two hours, but not 15.
Well, we're the 15-minute spot.
For some of them.
That's where the George's Liquor Store is and the bagel store.
All of those.
The deli.
I'm good at five.
And the strap hangers.
That's correct.
They're going to be there more than 15.
Right.
So some of them were quick-in-and-out kind of stores. But if it's only 25 cents, like... But when is it over 6:00 or 7:00?
7:00.
7:00.
7:00 to 7:00. It's got listed. 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I thought it was free parking after 6:00.
Take a look.
No, no, no. After... The way it works is, I believe, our meters end at 6:00. Right now, it's two-hour... Depending on where you are on Anderson Street, 15 minutes, two hours, or 30 minutes between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Right now, our meters are 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So after 6:00 p.m., because this is now a meter zone, you can park there, I think, without limitation instead of 7:00 p.m. So if you're going to a restaurant, if it's a non-meter zone, I mean, you can go and spend till midnight if you need to.
That was our goal with Main Street with the 6:00 time. So it stays in line. I mean, I would try to keep them in line. That was our goal with Main Street with the 6:00 time, so it stays in line. I mean, I would try to keep them in line.
So if I park on Anderson Street at 6:15, do I have to feed the meter?
No.
So we shouldn't be saying seven to seven.
No, no, the reason, the reason there's a reference to seven to seven is that's the part of the ordinance where we're deleting the language.
People get confused, and even the people that give the ticket get confused. That happened in Main Street when we moved to seven. And really, not everybody knows. A lot of people were getting tickets.
I mean, hopefully, it's signage, and I don't know if you do this, but a lot of places, when you change a zone, instead of writing a ticket the first couple of weeks for the regulars, you'll put a little note on the windshield.
Maybe that's a good idea, Jerry, like, just for the first couple of weeks is to not ticket, if you put notes on the windshield to remind people, until they get used to it. That's a nice suggestion.
Why the reason we gotta go to seven, you know, to six.
He's saying it only counts to six.
That's right.
I know it's six, right?
Six. I know there's a reference in the ordinance to seven to seven, but that's just technical in order to make clear where we're making the change. What is intended to happen is, and what is, we've already adopted, is that Anderson Street is going to become metered, and we are going to, you know, enforce it from the 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and on, I think Sunday is exempted.
I feel better about that then. On the weekends, Sunday is free all day.
Sunday is free, and it will just become a parking, as you need to park.
So then the folks that live there can park overnight, as long as they move it by nine in the morning, right?
I would tell you, if you may be old lady that maybe around there, that they, they used to park there because you know parking.
So does the council have a decision on the six 15-minute spots? Yay or no?
Yeah, we're gonna, I'd say we leave them, leave them metered. But I think we have to make it clear that it's nine to six, not seven to seven, so people can understand. How are you going to do that? But I think that I would.
Well, there's going to be a sign, you know, we're going to take down the signs that say two-hour parking, and we're going to put up new signs saying meter zone. I presume it's going to say meter zone nine to six. Or on the meters themselves, it's going to say, it should say that.
But what I would like is for the, and most meters do, if there's time on the meter, you can use it, especially in those, those spots where people in and out. You know, if I, I'm going in for a bagel, and there's 10 minutes on that meter, I'm good. I go and get it.
Until you get smart meters, the only way around that is just the smart meters.
It ends the second you pull away. Under the current circumstances.
We're not going to put.
What meters are going in there, the smart meters?
Pardon me?
What meters are going in there?
Right now, just play. We're, are they smart? No, we're, no, we're using retreads from another location just to put meter parking in.
Okay. Alright, so we all, we all.
Do they take credit cards?
Then it do nine to six.
Not yet.
And they can put 25 cents in for a half hour.
Nobody carries change anymore.
I do.
The, um, if we, by chance, I mean, what, what's the, the feedback from the retail stores? Are they, how aware are they?
I can only tell you anecdotally that my barber, George Body, on Anderson Street, has been asking me about meters for a long time, because he thinks that having meters creates the turnaround that brings him business. If you have somebody all day parking out in front of your shop, somebody's dissuaded from going in and getting a haircut. So I think that a lot of, and I know this from my experience on Main Street as well, merchants welcome turnover. So I think that I.
Well, that was one of our goals on Main Street with the, to stop the employees from parking in front of their businesses all day, you know, so the customers can park there.
Am I going to guarantee nobody's going to complain? No, but I.
Were they notified, I think, Ted? Before we do this, we should make sure they're all been notified.
Well, you know what the way to notify them is? Put the meters up, bag them for that grace period, bag them, say these meters will come effective on such and such a date, and there's your notifications.
As long as they're notified, they shouldn't just open their doors one day and see them.
Right.
I'll make sure that there's something posted on the website, but however, we could send a mailer to the residents in that thing, but there's going to be someone that says, oh, I live over here, nobody told me, you know.
Right.
It's almost an impossibility, to be candid. You're going to get complaints, because the minute you change one thing, someone, you know.
I'm more concerned about the businesses that they, they all understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Number three.
Number three is our landscaping ordinance, and the only change.
But there's a couple of changes.
No, 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 you're going to get, just hang on, I'm giving you the buildup here. I'm trying to sell this for you.
Next, we will have the, the words from our city attorney, Steve Kleiman, who will effectively explain this whole changes of the ordinance. Thank you.
Introduction, I love it. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. City Manager.
See, you asked for it, so I'm just delivering.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to all. There were a couple of issues that, that came up during the course of the introduction of this ordinance. Most notably, at the first, I think at the COW session before we introduced that, in Section 8, and then it's a, a reference to 94-9, Section E. Deputy Mayor Canestrino had indicated that there was a reference to such activities that she felt was not clear. So we changed that from such activities to non-commercial landscaping work. So it says, "These regulations shall not apply to the owners or renters of residential property who are performing non-commercial landscaping work on the property they own or lease only," which, you know, I think reads more clearly.
Make it crystal clear.
Yes, I think that's crystal clear. Non-commercial landscaping work on the property they own.
Thank you, Steve.
We also updated, because it, it said the regulation shall become effective on January 1st, obviously because of the, the delay. We made that March 1st, because if it's adopted tonight, that will give us some time to put those into effect. There is also a change. There was a reference to the noise ordinance in Section 894-9B. And there was some question about how the noise ordinance interacts with this ordinance, because the noise ordinance indicates that you can do landscaping work, commercial landscaping work, between, only between 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM, provided, unless the, the landscaping work is beneath the noise thresholds that the, that ordinance provides. Based on internal discussion, we took out the reference to the noise ordinance and just said, "All landscaping activity shall further comply with any applicable provisions of the Code of the City of Hackensack", rather than specifically referencing the noise ordinance. But it's still my opinion that this is enforceable, because this is separate from the noise ordinance. This is a safety issue. The reason that we're proposing moving landscaping work between September 1st and June 30th to 8:30 AM is because kids are walking to school until then. It has nothing to do with noise, it has everything to do with, you know, making sure if people are going to be, you know, driving around in these, these mowers, or making a lot of noise, it may be harder for kids to hear, or to be alert. And so the thought was, hey, you know, during the summer, when you're going to be mowing the lawns the most, kids are off, it's not a big deal, but between September 1st and June 30th, you know, let's just push that back half an hour. So I, I don't see how that is improper under the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance remains in effect, they still have to comply with the noise ordinance, but, but there are separate issues dealing with separate concerns. So those, I do believe, are considered minor changes. I don't think anything is so substantive here that it would require re-advertising or not adopting this tonight. I do believe you can proceed forward if you agree with these changes and want to move forward tonight with adoption of this ordinance, because they are really technical changes only.
Thanks for addressing all the issues, Steve.
Oh, you.
Oh, okay. Next is the Animal Cruelty Agreement. The last time we discussed this at a council meeting, I don't think it was completely clear that we actually needed a supporting, an approved resolution. But this is now listed again, only to approve a resolution from the mayor and council in this agreement. So we are now connected with the county to have this agreement and, and service being provided. So nothing's changed as far as the agreement, the terms. We just did not have, it was an oversight of approving resolution with this agreement with Bergen County to establish this M-H-L-E-O, Animal Cruelty Resolution that's required.
Right, and this is picking the lesser option too. So we're having two of our officers trained and.
Correct. Like I said, nothing's changed, except we just need to fix with resolution of the approval and the support of the mayor and council. Number five, number five is a approving of the towing companies. This is not a procedural thing, this is not a fee thing, this is just for the city's purposes, identifying the approved towing contractors that will work for the city for 2019.
These are the same five we had, I believe?
The, the, you have the list.
There's a couple that we're already knew.
There are two that have now been omitted, because they do not meet the criteria. You folks know.
Have they contested that? Have they contested that at all?
I don't think they were happy about it, but they received letters written by the city manager explaining what their issues are, and if you don't meet the criteria, you don't meet the criteria. The rules are the rules. They didn't exactly make them, so nothing personal, but at this point, you know, the minute I start making exceptions for them, this is, you know, where the omit comes back and causes a problem. Obviously, they still can be owner's request contacted for towing service, but they're not our go-to on-the-list service provider.
Just so you're aware, BT, before Ted, we had quite a go-around with this, remember? With the towing guys.
That's why I called about the two that were.
They were all throwing each other under the tow truck, because this one didn't have this, and I said, well, you don't have that, so you may get some of that here, just so.
We, we had a, just before this, and I was on vacation and took my little time off here, is that we had another meeting with all the towers, had them all in, had a discussion, reviewed the ordinance, reviewed the policy. I'm pretty much, I think, where we need to be with the towing, and we'll make two more modifications, and I think we're good. Do I think I made the whole world happy? I don't think that's possible, but I think that we're in full compliance. They now agree that we are following, you know, what's been dictated by the state in the towing policy, and I think we're in full compliance.
My one question, and it's, it's related to a particular towing company, but I'm going to bring it up publicly anyway. How much of a public street are they allowed to use to put cars on? A tow company that has, alright, they dismantle a car, they push it outside, it's missing a hood and fenders and whatever, and sits there all day on a public street.
That's, that's a, that's a Dean issue, that, that, I don't think that would go in towing.
Yeah, these are just city towers.
Body shop can leave vehicles that are not in, in running.
I'm concerned it's one of the ones that are on this list. So I'll tell you who it is and I'll go forward.
And, and I would just point out, we, we actually are going to make some technical changes to the towing ordinance with respect, respect to some fees and some things like that, that, that police department's recommending. We couldn't complete that, we obviously have a huge agenda and a bunch of ordinances for first reading, so I expect in the next meeting, you'll also see that as well.
And I'm assuming that that's, because that's what my questions were about, is there's this, in our, in our backup information, there's a January 18th email that talks about changing fees, so we are not doing that tonight.
No, only identifying the towing.
I'm just saying, so the backup stuff that's in here that talks about changing fees is not included tonight.
That's correct. There'll be an ordinance for first reading at the next meeting that will address the, I'm working with, with Sergeant De Persia and others at the police department to kind of come up with exactly what we need to do, and we're pretty close.
My only other recommendation that I put in my email was, I mean, it looks like these recommendations are that the snow towing is actually at a higher rate, and, you know, talking with my husband years ago, the snow towing is always at a reduced rate for many reasons. Usually, it's a much higher volume. In other words, you're coming and you're clearing out a whole, you know, when police come down, they say, hey, we've got six cars parked here, they all have to be towed, because it's snow. You know, so they're not just towing one, they're usually towing many cars, so usually you can negotiate a reduced rate for that, which, so we don't kill our residents also, you know, by charging them even more than they would normally pay for a tow. And I, I just thought, maybe that sounded good to me, maybe we should at least be talking to them about doing something like that for the snow tow, instead of raising it lower.
When, when we proposed the, the new ordinance fee changes, this, we'll explain this, but quickly, the current snow tow, it's a flat rate. The reason why that was accomplished is because when you get into snow, and they have to wench, or they have to shovel out, there was a big discussion about, everything's an extra. But when you add up all the extras, that, that's not going to serve the public for a towing or winching during a snowstorm. So I said, wait a minute, folks, we're going to have nothing but complaints. Charlie's towing, somebody's going to charge this fee, John's towing fee is going to charge that fee. How come he was 15 minutes cheaper? How come he was $15 more? I said, we're going to come up with a flat fee. Once it exceeds three inches, and they come out and tow these cars, if it takes you 15 minutes to do it, or it takes you 40 minutes to shovel this thing out, because it's covered in ice or snow, or whatever it is, that's the price. And they agreed to that. And I have to tell you, it took me some time to get to that, because by the time they got done, we were all over the planet with this Ouija board math, and this guy's going to charge this, and we're going to do that, and I said, no. Because it, it, it's going to be management nightmare for me.
I definitely agree in it being a flat rate, but I, I still think we should use the volume issue and see if we can get it, so we don't tell our taxpayers.
When I explain all the math and what the new state code follows, because they dragged out the state police order, I mean, I, trust me, I'm very well versed in this. This will turn out to be a bargain, not a, not a higher cost by today's current standards. I don't say you're going to have to like it, but it seems to be the going price.
Six.
Six is a discussion, the 2019 Risk Management Consultants Agreement and Resolution. There was some discussion about this before. All I can say is, the cost has not gone up. We did some modifications as far as our coverage, but this risk management agreement, if approved by the mayor and council, will serve us, in my opinion, well. I've been through this whole thing with Jackie and also Jim Magan, and I would recommend your approval. Seven is the Resolution Authorizing Participation in the Bergen County Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Rapid Deployment Force Plan. This is an annual thing, because mutual aid agreements, if they're contiguous, you don't have to get approval, but because this spreads countywide, every year, they go to all the municipalities, all 70, and that's Bergen County, and get them to sign this Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Plan for Rapid Deployment in case resources are needed, or we need to muster our troops and gather our resources for an event or a situation. Number eight is the 2019 Safe and Secure Grant. This is for the. Let's see, I'm one behind here. This is a, city was awarded a grant through the SFY 2019 Safe and Secure Grant Program. The total grant awarded was for $60,000. Funding is through, the grant will pay the offset salaries of one police officer and two civilian dispatchers within the Hackensack Police Department. As an FYI, these are existing employees of the Hackensack Police Department, not new hires. This, we were late in our filing in 2018, now we're ahead in 2019, so I'm happy to be ahead and, and thankful we're not behind. So if you folks.
On the subaward amount, it says state $60,000, and it says match fringe benefits. What's the fringe benefit part?
Well, I think the fringe benefit is, is we're on the hook for the benefits that we pay our employees, but $60,000 is the offset of just salary. Because obviously, there would be a variation of people's benefits depending on what they have.
It's certainly not going to pay for police officer and dispatchers, it's just a contribute, a contribution to their salary.
It's, it's a, it's a way to reduce our operational costs, and we're thankful for anything we can do to keep all of our police officers retained and hired, and certainly pay the bills. Last is number nine, Intro of the Ordinance of the Roll-Off Container and Dumpster. This is another quality moment of Mr. Kleiman, who has persevered through this ordinance with Dean Mattalian, and he's just done a fantastic job, and Mr. Kleiman?
So, so these are roll-off containers, I don't know if you're familiar with them, they have wheels, they, you pick them up with a truck, and you, you put them on a city street for large dumping projects. I was advised last week that there was some concern with the municipal court regarding the sufficiency of our existing city code as it came to dealing with a problem, roll-on, roll-off dumpsters. So what we've done is, we have identified a model ordinance and improved upon it from other municipalities to regulate these things, to ensure that if you wish to put a roll-on, roll-off dumpster on a city street, that you have to get the appropriate permit, pay the appropriate fee, provide sufficient insurance, ensure that you take steps to, that the city streets are not damaged in the event of a snowstorm, that you remove it, or we will remove it for you, and I have been advised that we have the equipment to allow us to do that. So if you're on a snow emergency road route, just like we tow a car, we'll take that, and we'll store it, and we'll charge you for the privilege. And also, we are going to prohibit any other form of storage unit in the municipal right-of-way, or on a municipal parking lot. You know, like those pods, things that you see a lot of times, because they're harder to remove, and we don't have the ability necessarily to do it the same way we do with these roll-on, roll-off dumpsters. So this is a pretty comprehensive ordinance, it's been reviewed with the prosecutor, with Dean, and with the city manager's office. And, and once we have this in place, we'll have a robust regulatory scheme that will allow us to, allow these to be placed on city streets and, and know that it'll be done in a safe and efficient manner.
Insurance requirement beforehand, what was it? Do we, do we know?
Well, we, we didn't really have anything specific in the city code governing these types of dumpsters. I think it may have just been done administratively. So I'm not even sure if we required insurance or not. Certainly, there was nothing in the city code that even mentioned these things. So I, I know there was an application process, I know it was reviewed for safety by.
There was, because I remember a long time ago, putting the part about making sure you have reflectors on the dumpsters. So there was, there was, had to be some language somewhere.
So they can be in the street, not, they don't have to be on the.
That's correct. I mean, these are specifically in the street, so it, it's going to be a situation where there's no place else to put it. If you're doing, you know, rehab on Main Street, or wherever it is, not really Main Street, probably not likely, but on some street where there is no parking, no driveway where you can put these storage containers, the only way for major work to be done is to have one of these things feasibly. So, and, and there are rules, I mean, the street has to be a certain distance, distance wide, you know, there has to be a safety review to make sure that it's not going to impede the flow of traffic.
So these things would be there around the clock. This is different from then, like, say, an apartment building who puts out their garbage dumpster.
Yes, that's correct. This has nothing to do with garbage dumpsters.
It's very different.
This is, this is specific, it's a, it's a large, heavy-duty container that is, you know, taken on and off by a specialized vehicle that is used really for industrial, industrial waste. You know, if you're doing demo work, you know, you'll, you'll put the stuff in there, you know, you'll cover it up, and then when it's full, the truck will come pick it up, do whatever it does with it and return it. And the permits are limited, so it's a 14-day permit, and then you can renew it at no cost.
But it has no effect on garbage dumps?
No, yes, has nothing to do with, this is just a specialized, a specialized thing that is used.
Thirty, 30 days, number eight.
It's been, I don't know if that document shows it, but it's been altered to be 14 days, because what we want to do is keep control. This arose out of a meeting we had, where our constable issued some summonses, and our municipal judge threw the summonses out under Title 39. It was not the enforcement powers to make this work. So I had a meeting with our municipal prosecutor, our municipal judge, and Dean, and the judge made the recommendation, I'll rule on anything that I can enforce, but if there's nothing by statute in here, and Title 39 really doesn't cover the issues that the city is getting, and obviously, with all the redevelopment, these 30-yard containers are, seem to be growing in abundance here. Not valet parking, but a sense that they're parked, and of course, you have to be able to control sight distance, can't be in front of fire hydrant, can't block egress, there's all these components, because everything now becomes complicated. So the thought process, and to his credit, Dean Mattalian, who took this very personal, led the charge, we've, and, and I have to say, and I've been busting his chops tonight, but Steve Kleiman has done a really good job of trying to sort out something that really doesn't really exist so far in the city, and to put this in place so we can resolve this conflict, take care of the issues that we have, and make sure that it's enforced in the, in the city, and the residents remain safe. And that, that was the sole goal of this whole purpose. An exercise.
Alright.
And that would complete the city manager's report.
Okay, can I have a motion to open to the public, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give a name and address to the clerk. You will have three minutes' time. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close the public.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nobody's opposed. Need a motion to go into closed session?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed? You're on.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7b7 and 7b8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is in the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas, the mayor and council wish to discuss the following issues: personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within 90 days, or at such time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
Steve?
I do have a few cases we'll talk about. We do have a couple resolutions for your approval, including Parham, workers' compensation case, REVI, I do want to mention a litigation, the Lewis litigation. And I think that's it for litigation for now. If anything else, as always, I'll announce it after we come out of closed session.
Right. We'll see everybody at 8:00 o'clock. Thank you.
Do nice, right?
Good evening, everybody.
Nice to myself.
Madam Clerk?
Hi, we need a motion to close.
Need a motion to close the executive session in the back room?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none?
And just to add for the record, we did also mention additional litigation, the Candela Taranova case, ongoing litigation involving ex-Chief Zisa, and a case brought by Jason Nunnamacher.
Okay, motion to close the council, the whole?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, none opposed?